Now we're going to have a session by the Board of Trustees of the Wikimedia Foundation. The title is Connecting the Dots, our working the Wikimedia Foundation Board of Trustees. It's going to be a panel held by Natalia, Shani and Vicky, who are all members of the Board of Trustees. If you're ready, I think we can start.
Thanks very much. And hi, everyone. Good afternoon and thanks for joining us. We... Is Vicky already here? Nat, were you able to ping her? No? Okay, so we're hoping that Vicky will join us in a second, but we basically thought when we saw the schedule that it's a good chance to to have an informal chat with the community, maybe share a bit about what the board is doing these days and just have an open platform to answer questions. So with that in mind, I think I'll ask Nat, who, as you all know, is our current chair. Very exciting. And Nat, do you want to start by maybe sharing a bit about updates from what we've been doing recently and how the board maybe is structured? Maybe there are some folks here that don't have that context, so that will be helpful.
Hello, everyone. So I am Nat Tumki, Natalia Tumki, for those who don't know me. I'm a Ukrainian Wikipedia, and I am also currently now the Chair of the Wikimedia Foundation Board of Trustees. And so, before I give a few updates about the board work, I'm also going to set some level of expectations for the session. We are individual board members of this session, so we do not have the power to promise anything on behalf of the board or on behalf of the Wikimedia Foundation. We are, of course, going to try to answer your questions, especially if they are in the scope of our activities. And if no, then, just like with any other conversations with the board, we would try to find the answers to your questions and maybe post them in writing or something. So just for you to know that we are not experts on everything. We are the board members of one organization, even if we're a very influential organization in the media world. So, yeah, we just had our board meeting finished in the middle of October. And we have four, well, we have three new trustees selected through the community selection process, and we reappointed Daryush Yemanyak to the Board of Trustees. Oops. Can anyone hear me well?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I guess. Yes, so we now have new trustees and also, so we are onboarding them. We also have an incoming CEO joining us in January, and she greeted all of you on Friday. And also, we have changed a bit of the structure of the board. We already have an executive committee, and we also changed a bit the scope of the committees that we have. At the moment, I'm going to explain about this in details if anyone is interested later, if we have the questions. Questions about that. Overall, that's what we were up to internally. We also had statements about Wikimedia Enterprise recently and brand resolutions, and I sent a very detailed letter to Wikimedia L with the results of the board meeting. I want to mention that the board minutes usually take a lot of time to publish because there is a structural, so to say, problem. Other board meetings are very extensive. It's a few hours. For example, we met through like four days for four hours. They are very extensive, and the staff needs to work on them in order for them to be reflecting what has happened, but also not putting that this trustee said this, or this, or this. So this should be like a readable document and also legal document. So we usually approve it at our next board meeting, which takes like up to three months. So that's why we decided to move to communicating about the outcomes of the meeting with the resolutions published and explaining what has happened to Wikimedia L, just to give people the understanding of what has happened. Yeah, I'm not going to go into more updates about this. Over to you, Shani.
Yeah, just expanding a bit on what Nat just said. Again, for those who may be less familiar with the board, maybe worth mentioning that the board is operating via different committees. And Nat already mentioned that we have a new committee now, but maybe we should give Nat an overview of the different committees and who's the chair of each committee. Would that be helpful for people, or is everyone here familiar with it? We're trying to go with the flow of what people actually want to hear about. So please feel free to tell us in the chat.
Or you can also raise your hand if you want to.
Yes. So maybe we'll just briefly mention that there is an overview would be nice. Okay, so Nat, do you want to give the overview of the different committees and the different chairs? And then I'll take it and maybe note something about the CAC and...
Yeah. There is a question about us posting a link to Meta. Again, updating the information on Meta is time-consuming activities. We are still working out how and who needs to be responsible for that. Because again, it mentions lots of, lots of times, old or outdated committees are going to be mentioned on Meta. So that's why I can't at the moment give you the link to the right page. But I'm going to name our committees, what we have now. We changed the name of the Board Governance Committee to just Governance Committee. That's like a small one, just in name. But we also changed the name of the the scope of the committees. We are trying to make all the charters of committees be almost the same in structure. Shani, I need to answer the door. Could you please take it over for a minute?
Sure. So I'll do the overview of the different committees. So there are some very basic committees that usually every board has. One is the Audit Committee, which is now chaired by Tanya. And she's doing it in collaboration with our CFO, Jaime, at the Wikimedia Foundation. And besides that, there is the Board Governance Committee, and that is now chaired by Daryush. And other committees that we have is the Product and Technology Committee, that is chaired by Isra. And the Community Affairs Committee, which is chaired by me. We also have a Special Projects Committee that is now chaired by Jimmy. And we have some, these are the five biggest, right? So Governance, Audit, BGC, Product, CAC, and Nat, am I missing anything? Special projects?
HR.
Oh, HR, right. So we have HR Committee, which is again a fairly regular committee to have in boards chaired by Raju. And we also have, the board is also liaising, so we are, we have Nat and I as liaisons to the FD, to the, sorry, to AFCO. And there is a liaising of Nat now with the Language, right? Nat, Language Committee, sort of? And we have Isra as the liaison to the Elections Committee. And I think, I think that's it. Did we miss anything? Other than that, the board may also have ad hoc committees. So these are committees that would open for a specific amount of time, like the Brand Committee, that I was the chair of and just finished its year-long work. And as Nat mentioned, what is happening now that is kind of new and part of a bigger plan that the board had to to have, we have a board evolution plan, so we are always working in doing our board work internally better. So part of the evolution plan is to open an executive committee. So basically, the chairs of each of the committees that exist are, in a sense, coming together. And this committee, maybe Nat can expand more on that, but this committee is not about, it's not like having a board within a board, that's not the idea at all. But it's more of having a platform for all the different chairs to discuss and make some high-level brainstorming together, making sure that knowledge is not just sitting with the chair or the vice-chairs, which, by the way, are now, Nat is the chair, I am the vice-chair, and Isra is the second vice-chair. And so we just want things to be a bit more transparent even internally. And so the executive committee is going to help us do that. And Nat, I'll pause here to see if you have anything that you want to add on the executive committee.
Yeah, so we haven't met as an executive committee as of now. We're just starting to work on that in preparation for having a 16-member board. It's a lot of people, and they're doing it some coordination. So this is mostly like not making the decision, but really coordinating how each committee works in order to make sure that if there is some matter, and for example, it shouldn't go just to one committee. It should be worked in two committees. Like, I don't know, for example, Wikimedia Enterprise, it connects to Audit because it's about money at the moment. It also connects to Community Affairs Committee because it's also connects to the community, how community communication is going to happen around that. Also Governance can be, you know, so we do need that like additional layer of how to coordinate stuff better. And there was a question in the chat about advisors, volunteer advisors in the committees. So the board was developing alongside the Wikimedia Foundation, and it happened so that some committees were created during different times of period, of different times. So what we are trying to do now is to actually make sure that all committees can have volunteer advisors, staff support, and all other things, so that it doesn't depend whether the committee was created like three years ago or whether it was created like from the beginning. So we are working on that, that every committee can have volunteer advisory members. And then it would be up to the committee and up to the chairs to, you know, talk it over, whether it would be useful. I can add here, in my personal opinion, that I think that this volunteer advisors would be useful to have for committees because that's exactly kind of the school that we would need for prospective trustees to get experience in, you know. Some people can actually understand by trying whether this kind of work is suitable for their interests, whether they would love to be working on this. And some people can decide that, no, that's, you know, actually, it's not up to me. I can dedicate a few hours to be a volunteer advisory member, but dedicating and being responsible for all that happens is not what I'm up to. But yeah, so this is like the work in progress. The work that we started with the Governance Review, for us mostly, is to make sure that we have the systems and structures that we can, you know, work with. And the flow of information, the communication is better. Of course, it takes a lot of time because we do need some expert advices on this and the advice. And we also need some materials and discussions, of course, lots of discussions. I think that Victoria joined us.
Wonderful.
Maybe we can give her a minute to introduce herself.
Vicky, would you like to say hello? Can you hear us? Can you open camera?
Hello, but can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, that's wonderful. And can you see me by any chance?
No, we can't.
I don't know why. I don't know why. But I just want to say hello, everybody. I am the new trustee. I was elected in August, and I should say that the experience is overwhelming. It's a lot of stuff to take on, and so I agree with Natalia when she says that it would be good to have people in advisory capacity who may look how it all works and know what is happening. Because so far, so I am on the three committees. It's Product and Technology Committee, Audit Committee, and the Community Affairs Committee. And I have a feeling like I came to a party several hours late. So everybody knows what is happening around, and I'm just frantically trying to meet everybody, to greet everybody. And I would say that, just like this conference, I don't have any useful input so far to give because you need to have a lot of background. But hopefully, when the new stuff will start happening, I will be here from the beginning. So I will be able to know what is happening and give a useful input.
Yeah, Vicky, I'm just echoing some comments that I see on the chat as well. First of all, this is, I think, in itself really, really useful. I think people really, some of the descriptions that I've heard is that the board is sort of like a black box, and people really don't have an actual understanding of how it operates and how it works. And this is partly why we are here and why we've done this session. And I think you sharing how overwhelming and how difficult it is and challenging at the beginning is really important. So thank you for saying that, and maybe it's a good time to say that what Vicky experiences now is a thousand times better than when I joined the board even, which was in 2019, because now we actually have an actual onboarding plan, a seven-month-long plan for Vicky and the rest of the trustees. So this is an actual improvement that we implemented just now, and I'm really happy about because it is overwhelming and it is a lot to take in. And so that's just one of the things that the board has done in the past year to kind of operate in a better way, as Nat was saying. And just if I can add one more comment about advisors, I'll say that this is not a new thing for the board. The board used to have different advisors in different capacities in the past, but not for many, many years now, and not in an organized manner. And so what Nat is describing is us trying to be really more consistent in our charters, which are the documents that kind of guide us, like bylaws that chapters may have or user groups may have. And so these charters kind of help us guide and focus the work of each committee. And so we're trying to make sure that, yes, of course, there are differences, but there are some things that are done in the same consistent way throughout the whole board and all committees. And I'll say also that we have been experimenting with advisors, at least in the Brand Ad hoc Committee, that again is now done. But for the past year, we've had nine community advisors. Yay, Vicky, we have a picture for you. Hooray! Okay. Sorry, it got me distracted. But in any case, what I wanted to say is that we've had nine community liaisons that we, that were invited to, that the community chose and were invited to to meetings with the committee and kind of helped us throughout that process, the yearly process that led to the resolution on brand that you've seen lately. And I see Nat, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we are kind of a transitioning board because we are now at 11 and we are trying to get to 16. And that's why we are kind of trying to be a boarding board, if we would be able to. We are trying to document things more and to work on, you know, things for the future. And if you have a problem or something, or some issue, we are not trying to just resolve it and then forget. We are trying to kind of reflect what has happened, why it has happened, and is there a way for us to secure or to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future? So if, for example, something would require discussions, would require discussions in the past, just to resolve, others would also be like two floored ones. We would also try to make sure that it's somehow documented in a policy or in some guidelines or something. So, yeah, I hope that we are going to have an onboarding year for the board. So we would be able actually better at documenting. I can share that when I joined the board in 2016, I became a Chair of the Board Governance Committee, and I went to board Wiki. As a Wikipedia, I started to read everything that I was able to. And things were not documented in a very consistent way, but I did find, did find in one of the corners on the board Wiki that a new trustee is supposed to receive trainings as an onboarding. But we had the previous ID leaving, already left. We had a new CEO, we had a new Chair of the board, we had a new Chair of the Board Governance Committee, and our General Counsel was on his way out. So I naively asked, so, okay, I'm supposed to receive some trainings. Where are my trainings? Who is going to onboard me? And I received an honest answer in the documents of the Wikimedia Foundation, in the policies or protocols of the Wikimedia Foundation. The Chair of the Board Governance Committee is supposed to onboard and train new people. So you are supposed to do it. And I was like, hello? I don't think that I'm actually able to do that, but that's... So if I compare from 2016, how we started, how we treated new trustees joining, I can say that we've come a long way, but it's still not perfect. And we should make sure that new people, when they join, they already know something about things.
Yeah, one more step that we took this time before before people were actually joining us is to have a, the CAC, the Community Affairs Committee, the CAC, in short, facilitated a meeting with all the candidates. That was the first time we've done something of the sort, because basically, we didn't have the CAC before. Maybe it's a good segue to say a few words on the CAC, because I think it has specific relevance for everyone in the room. So just to give context, the CAC is the second youngest committee that we have on the board. Now the second because we have the executive committee, which is the youngest. But we started only this February this year. And the reason why the CAC was opened is because, you know, I was a board member. I remember I was just finishing my first year as a trustee and kind of reflecting on the process that I went through that year and everything that we were doing on the board. And I kind of realized that there is a sort of a gap or a missing structure of sorts because different committees would deal with community-related issues, but we didn't have an internal structure to kind of do work in a more consistent and more strategic way when it came to the community. And we all know that we've been struggling with trust. I'll say in parentheses, there have been a wonderful lightning talk on Friday coming from this community on mistrust, and I think it was super, we all think it was super relevant and really thankful, and we can discuss it a bit later, maybe, if people are interested. But we recognize that there is a gap of communications and mistrust, and there is basically history. And not always a happy, a happy one. Nat, you want to add something?
Yes, it seems that people do not feel that they are encouraged to ask questions. And please, if you have questions, you can write them in the chat, or you can raise your hand, or you can post. Oh, and the raised hand as a symbol that you want to say something, so we would know that. Yeah, this is the time.
Yeah, we have 18 minutes more, so I think it's enough time to get some people from the communities asking questions and leaving comments about your work. Okay, so we have a question by Sharma in the chat. The Governance Wiki is open again for community members after a many years' break. What kind of community activities expected to or awaited there?
I can take that one. So the community support on that Wiki was usually about maintenance. So, you know, some things were connected to each other, pages, or, I don't know, typos could have been checked or translation provided, things like that. So again, this Wiki is not for having discussions. We are usually having them on Meta. But it is for making sure that the governing documents are in one place and that they are up to date, and if there are any issues, then they can be raised and maintained better. So that's, at least we are not segueing into this Wiki becoming the Wiki for discussions.
Before there are any other questions, I would like to maybe just finish the loop about the CAC, if that's okay with everyone, because I think not everyone knows that they can contact. It's a contact the CAC or the board rather. So the idea was to basically have a committee that will deal directly with anything related to the community and help to facilitate better connections with the community, open up, be more transparent about what we do. We are trying to have open conversations with the community. It will be every other month as of January, and we already had a few this year. There was one on October 20th, and the next one is going to be January, and after that, we're going to do it every other month. And even without the open conversations, people from the community can reach out to us with any questions through this email that I'm pasting here. It's AskCAC. And of course, you can post on the Meta Talk page. If you go to Meta and write simply CAC, you will get to our page. And this is what I wanted to mention about the CAC.
Thank you, Shani. I see your hand by Andre.
Please, go ahead. Can you unmute and just talk to us?
Yeah. So in the announcement about the branding plan suspension, there was mention of support to local affiliates branding efforts. Could you elaborate a bit on that? Do you have? Do you have, do you already have ideas on what kind of support are we talking about?
Yeah, so maybe to give some context, the the resolution on brand, what the what the Ad-hoc Committee kind of um concluded and then recommended for the full Board and the the whole Board approved it. Um and then you saw the resolution. We talked about three different ways in in which we can, we are suggesting to move forward with branding, um which is not the renaming, right? So we we're putting in a sense through this um uh through this resolution, the renaming of the Wikimedia Foundation, which made a lot of um um a lot of noise in the system, sort of, aside. We're just putting it aside and we want to concentrate on things that may be simply helpful to the community. And one of the things that we, one of these avenues that we will be exploring is helping new affiliates or uh emerging affiliates or just starting out affiliates or in the emerging um in emerging countries to uh work on brand. But alongside that work, we are also wanting to continue to support um different affiliates, all affiliates around the movement. They could be more matured, like chapters or simply user groups. Um but the idea is to help uh affiliates just understand what branding is better, do workshops around brand awareness, um give resources, et cetera, et cetera. So this is the idea. The idea is to help affiliates when they want to, to be helped. So when, if an affiliate feels a need or a um a gap in brand work and wants some assistance, uh then the brand team can can help with workshops, with resources, et cetera. And the second aspect of it sort of is working on uh taglines and just a a more flexible naming system for affiliates. So we are hoping that this is also something that will be helpful to to affiliates as well. Nat, you wanted to add something?
Uh no, actually, I wanted to respond to Philip's questions in the chat uh about um which role does the Board uh see for itself in the drafting and implementation of the Global Council Movement Charter? At the moment, as we are, like at ju- just just at this moment that we are, uh actually, the Wikimedia Foundation has a lot of power to share. So the Board needs to be involved because this is the the uh as one of the uh parties to the process. Um we are going to appoint to um Board Liaisons, uh not uh not actually members, not voting members of the drafting committee, but liaisons uh who would be working with the, who would be present at the meetings, who would be able to uh serve as bridges uh between the Board and between the drafting committee um to help uh to help the process, to give the perspectives, um to share the knowledge and the, make sure that the information flow is going um smoothly. Uh because we do believe that this is a very important um piece of structure or I don't know, founding stone for our uh future and for being able to implement the um structures. Yes, so these liaisons are going to be Board Members. Uh and they are going to be liaison in the role of connecting the Board specifically uh with the process.
Uh thank you.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, just just a second, Kirill. I I just want to add um to to what Nat said, that um the Board in that sense, you know, um does not see itself, uh thi- this needs to be a community effort. It it cannot be a decision by just one portion of of the movement. It has to be a collaborative effort to to making these decisions. But we do think that the Board has to be involved. And so we will be in the room, but in a capacity of more guidance rather than actually defining things ourselves. Philip, is that, does that help? Uh does that answer your question?
Um yeah, I wasn't quite aware of that. I think that's also what Nicole's question uh like is leads to. Um I have a follow-up question, but I think we can do that later because there were some other questions in the meantime.
Uh yeah, next question, uh is there a way for Board to acknowledge historic disproportions in support of communities in a very explicit and useful way by both geographical and historically showing pasts?
Uh can we, can we ask, wait, can can we please ask the people who asked the question to just ask them?
Okay, one question, so I think it needs clarification.
Taco, please, please go, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'm interested, uh this Board and expressed already and then the the process over um the Community Strategy Strategy Twenty-three expressed several times uh that there was historic disproportion in allocating resources to different regions, to different groups, to uh different topics. Uh but somehow this always remained vague, like there was uh an idea that this is true and this needs to be compensated in the future by releasing more resources, but there was never an explicit gesture that was showing how much resource allocations was disproportionate historically and geographically. And I wonder if there is a way to do this uh in this current uh Board. Are 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 you ready to do this kind of uh uh transparency that is not only for your time but also historic?
Um I still need to um understand or clarify your question a bit more. Uh are you talking about um the resources of the Wikimedia Foundation?
Yes, yeah, primarily.
Yes, this is, but this is like very clear, even without any numbers. Um that the the most supported project was always the English Wikipedia and also Wikipedias rather than, for example, Wikisource or, for example, some other sister projects. Um so um that's that's like the quick uh answer to your question. I um the 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 what you are talking about is actually a systemic problem from my perspective to the whole uh movement, how it's organized. We are not very good at documenting things, how we do. So I'm not sure how easy it would be to actually uh extract the numbers and have everything calculated and then see that this event organized by Wikimedia Foundation, for example, Wikimedia, was uh giving more um uh scholarships to